We will be doing the invocation of the pledge. This first thing we're going to move to is 2.1, Discussion and Action, or Discussion and Consider Resolution 2020-19, canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the general election held on November 3rd, 2020, for the purpose of electing a mayor and city council member, place two, for a two-year term, due to the postponement of the regular May 2020 election. Term of the office will be from November 3rd, 2020, to May 1st, 2022. Ms. Shelley, I'll turn it over to you at this point.
The first one is 2.1, which is the campus of the general election, and the mayor election was scheduled for December 3rd, due to the results of that election, who elected the mayor, who had to move to Australia, who comes in on the May 1st, 2022. For the mayor's position, there were a total of 1,014 votes passed. Downey Lower received 1,028 votes, 43 cents, and Kananet Shore received 1,024 votes, 56 percent. By Kananet Park, Kananet Shore has been supervised by the election council as the elected mayor from Kananet Shore. The councilman of course can't position a total of 1,014 votes, 800 and 49 votes, and Nathan Hodges has received 1,024 votes. Nathan Hodges has been supervised by the councilman of course too. The council will need to make a motion to approve the resolution canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the general election held on November 3rd, 2020, for the purpose of electing a person to fill the vacancy of city council member, place four, due to the postponement of the regular May 2020 election. The term of the office will be from November 3rd, 2020, to May 1st, 2021. Turn this over to you again, Ms. Shelley. This is the special election to give a very specific reason, it was four, it was also held on November 3rd, and the results of this election have led to the vacancy with the transfer on November 22nd, 2022, are a total of 9,763 votes passed. Brian Davis received 1,024 votes, and Daniel Tucker received 739 votes. Brian Davis received 75 as the elected councilman of place four. You will need to make a motion to approve the resolution, canvassing the returns and declaring the results.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to declare the winner of the, for that place, to be Mr. Davis, whose term of office will be from November 3rd, 2020, to May 1st, 2022.
All right.
I'll second that, Mayor.
All right, we've got a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous. All right, moving on to 2.3, newly elected mayor and council members for place two and four will take the oath of office. Judge Russo, you'll come forward. I'll let you do that in the order that you feel is necessary.
At this point, before we begin, Mr. Mayor, I would like to reiterate education and pledge of the oath of office before we pray for your education and our most important leaders.
Bow your heads with me. Dear only Father, as we gather here today, Father, we ask that you grant these new elected leaders wisdom, and that you put your head of protection over the city and over these leaders. Father, we know that all things are possible through you. Father, we just ask when they have those tough times that they need not question, but just go to you, Father. We just, again, bless the city, bless our police officers, our deputies, the firefighters, and just those serving overseas. And on this Veterans Day, that we remember those who paid the ultimate sacrifice, Father, that we honor those today. I ask this in your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Bow your heads.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'm in a Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. All right. All right, so we're going to look good? Now, is that on three, or is that four?
All right, well, we've already done the invocation and pledge, so the next thing is rules of decorum matter effect. We're going to move to citizens' comments, but before we move to citizens' comments, this is something I thought about since the day of the election. You know, there's, there's a lot going on in the world right now. And there's a lot going on with the election. There's still arguing, counting votes, doing all that. But something struck me the day of the election. I sat out here with Ms. Bodart. She was running against me. And she said something to me, and she, it struck with me. She said, "Thank you for running a clean race." You know, that's, that's what it's all about. So what I want to do tonight is I want to recognize Ms. Bodart, and Mr. Tucker's not here tonight, but I want to recognize Mr. Tucker as well, because both of them stepped up and decided to run for office. Although they didn't succeed in winning, they took the hardest step there was. They stepped up to do that. And they should be commended for that. And I want to say thank you. All right, guys, now, we got to get down to work. All right, first thing up is citizens' comments. Mr. Pallani, you're actually the first one up on citizens' comments.
Good evening. My name is Mohamed Pallani, and I'm with the MFS Group LLC. We purchased the last year southwest corner of Highway 205 and 550 FM 550, 1.5 acre land. And tonight we are at agenda for 7.3. We are favor of sanitary sewer line project. Also, we are not in the favor of it. We would like to be participate in the fair cost sharing with the city on that, this project. And to me, this project, we need to be get soon as possible, because this price is for, I believe, $316,000 to finish this project. And it can be changed end of November this year. So we should go move forward on this. And we, we are in favor of this project. We get finished as possible. Anything else? Any questions?
I don't have any questions for you, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Ms. Paul.
1518 Forenza Court, Adrian Walcom. Okay, normally I come prepared with a little speech and all that, but I decided just go ahead and wing it. And I just, first off, congratulations, and thank you for your service. Obviously, I'm, I'm just going to reiterate why I went into office, why I went there, is because when I moved to Sonoma Verde, my concerns were around me. The road issues, there was construction issues. We had issues with builders getting things approved that they shouldn't have, because we had the wrong contractors that were approved by the city to work. And so my concern is, is that we need to make sure that we have qualified engineers, qualified city planners. Even with the recent RCH thing, I did get a report back, and I'll share that with you at the next meeting, because it will be related to that, at that time, is, you know, we need to make sure that we have the best types of people that will be working on behalf of the city, because we are representing the people and making sure that we, they have faith in us to do the right, for them to do the right job. In addition to that, you know, we have a lot of administration things that need to be taken care of. And I know that there's things that are on the agenda right now to approve, and there's like, a need to be open and transparent. You know, you talked about that you want to have town hall meetings and discuss all the things that you want to have getting approved for the city. And I don't think they're really aware of all the magnitude of the stuff that's being put on the agenda tonight. And there's not really a, a basic plan to overlay, like, okay, this is what's happening. And I think it's going to be taken by surprise by a lot of people saying, like, how did this get approved? And then the same thing with the bidding options. I think it would be prudent to go ahead and table it for, have an open session to where we can all hear all the bidding options, as well as to be able to ask questions to those who want to work on behalf of the city. I mean, it's a pretty big deal, dealing with, you know, sewers and plumbing of any kind. I mean, that's kind of a, a concern. And we have already seen issues with past defects from those who are supposed to be responsible and qualified to do the work. So I think that it would be best to go ahead and, and work this stuff out in the next sessions, and making sure that we are reviewing the actual contractors and actually asking questions of them in open session. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Oh, and one more thing, I'm sorry. I have been taken on to make banana bread, and it's like a thing. And so I, so me and Keisha, like, many months ago, I've been telling him about my banana bread, and then I said I was going to make some. And so I finally had the night to make some for you guys, so I hope you'll enjoy it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. All right, Ms. Bodart?
Sal Bodart, 402 Cattle Bear and Dry. First off, Mayor, thank you for those words, and, and it really was a good conversation that we had, and I'm glad that we were able to do that. What I want to talk to you tonight about is the same thing that Adrian did, item 7.3. And, and right along with what she said, I am really concerned about the citizens not being aware of this going on. As, you've heard me say before, as president of my HOA, I posted a thing on our neighborhood board Facebook page last night, and nobody commented. Nobody said anything. So that really worries me that they don't know all the details that need to be done. I mean, this is a major expense. It's a major undertaking. And a lot of me, part of me says, thinks that this is just bad timing. Could, we could do this later, because of the, the 205 expansion. And we don't really have anybody else lined up to, to go into those businesses. And for another thing, we don't have our comprehensive plan yet, so we can't guarantee that that's where we're going to decide that that's going to be our business district. So there, to me, there's a lot of things in play. So if, if I could make a suggestion, I would opt for option four tonight, if, you know, if you're going to table it or anything. And just give the community some time to learn the details and, and be able to ask you guys some questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments? Going once? Going twice? All right. Citizens' comments are closed for the evening. Move on to 6.1. Consider approval of the October 13th, 2020 city council meetings, or council meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve this council meeting.
Let's bring our main motion to approve the council meeting minutes from the October 13th meeting.
All right, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right.
No, Nathan said he abstained because he wasn't there.
He abstained because he wasn't here. All right, so we will move on to 7.1. Discussion and action regarding the selection of a new mayor pro temp. It's customary to appoint a mayor pro temp following each election. So I'll entertain a nomination for mayor pro temp. I've got, okay, I've got a nomination for Lorna. Do I have a second? I've got a motion, I mean, I've got a nomination, I've got a second. Do we have, do we take additional nominations at this point?
I think there are any.
Okay. Is there any other nominations for mayor pro temp? Okay, I've got a nomination, I've got a second, so all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous. All right, you are welcome. All right, moving on to 7.2. Presentation of Fire Station Design Build Update and Related Matters. I will ask the AGCM representative to step up to the podium. It's on, so I'll tell you to turn it on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Old mayor pro temp, new pro temp, and new councilman. Congratulations on your elections and reelection. As you say, stated we're here tonight to give you guys a budget update and just a scheduling update as well. I believe you guys have the budget in front of you. This will be kind of the format moving forward. If you guys are okay with this format, it's showing you the actual complete dollar value of everything in there, and then also what is, has been committed to date and billed to date. So it's, we're going to keep running track every month, and so we'll be presenting this to you on this format every month, and updating as we go along. The scheduling on the project is still on schedule. We were going to do some design review this week, but we're going to push it to next week, 90% CD reviews. And we last, during the last month, we have also gotten with the plating and gotten that started and moving. We've got all the information from Speed Fab over to Chris Cooney, who's going to be doing the plating for us. And so we're moving along pretty good there. I'll let Randy talk to you about the elevations and everything else on the next point. But was there any questions as far as the budget at this point, or scheduling?
Not this much.
Okay. As you guys see, the green means it has been paid and invoiced out. So that's, those are live numbers on that. So I would like to sit and update those as we go along every month. All righty?
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Randy Landers with Speed Fab Creed. I'm the project executive for the, for our fire station. I want to add my congratulations to all of y'all for election and reelection, and hope we're all here to, to work together, and, and that the city gets everything they, they want. And this is, Fire Station's going to be a great project. We're right on schedule on design. The 90% drawings are being delivered sometime before midnight tonight, was our plan, to AGCM, and to the chief, and to Ms. Palomba. We're going to start our review process, and we'll be submitting the plans for building permit. The plan is to send those in next Friday, the 20th, which is right on schedule. We're going to possibly look at doing some pull ahead work, because we have a, a large amount of earthwork to do, soil preparation work that's going to take about a month, that doesn't have anything to do with anything else on the project. So we're going to get that awarded early, and, and get that started as, to kind of get us a jumpstart on it. So you'll start seeing a big mud hole across the street fairly, fairly quickly. We've got the, the, just the overview drawings. These are obviously not the construction documents. But we've got a site plan, a floor plan, and a, and an elevation artist's renderings for you to, to look at. We're going to leave those here for you. And I'm here to answer any questions if you have them at this time.
So, so did we get the results of the soil study? Was, is everything?
It was what we hoped.
Okay, good.
Yeah. Yeah, no bad surprises. Still bad, but not horrible. It was expectedly bad, yeah. But no, no worse than we thought it was going to be.
Okay. And when do you think we'll have the ground crews sound?
That's up to you guys. We're ready. I've got my gold shovels all polished up. I would suggest we do it sometime, maybe just before you do your Christmas tree lighting, or something like that.
Somewhere next couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's over to us.
Okay. Okay.
Who did the, the sign out?
We had that done.
That's great.
Well, thank you.
Any questions for me? All right, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to 7.3. Presentation, Discussion and Action Regarding the State Highway 205 Sanitary Sewer Line Award, a bid to double R utility, a total of $328,647 for the base bid, or $316,475.20 for the alternate bid. Ms. Lisa, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, Mayor. Several months ago, the city council engaged Teigenall and Perkins, an engineering firm, to design a sanitary sewer line along Highway 205 from Villa Toscana, which is the entrance to Sonoma Verde, to FM 550, in order to serve part of the area in the Clendenchism Zone general business. Once the design was complete, council then authorized Teigenall and Perkins to prepare an invitation to bid for construction of the project. Bids were opened on October 1, and the bid titulation sheet is attached to your packet, along with the letter submitted by Teigenall and Perkins, kind of explaining the process for that and the results. At this time, I'd like to request Matt Atkins, if he'd approached the podium, and if he'd briefly described the, the base bid and the alternate bid options, and their recommendation for the firm for the project, and then he can answer any of your technical questions about the sewer line.
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the elected this evening and getting sworn in. I am Matt Atkins with Teigenall and Perkins. We are the firm that did the design, and then subsequently handled the bidding along Ms. Paloma. As she mentioned, it was, the bids were opened on October 1, and double R construction is the apparent low bidder, and we vetted them out. And we've worked with them several times in the past. We do this kind of work for many municipal, municipalities, easy for me to say, across the metroplex. And they're one of the, one of the better contractors that we've worked with doing this type of work. The options that you see there, option, the, the base bid option is the option that runs along Highway 205. It would be just outside of the right away of Tex-OT, so there's no Tex-OT interference there. And it would be, serve the properties on the, in the front of, from the front. The alternative bid is one that runs along the west side of the properties, which is the way that the properties currently drain, which is the typical way you would, where you would put the sewer line. So just for ease of convenience, we, we did both of those options to see which one would be cheaper. Turns out the alternative option is the, is the cheaper one. It would require just one easement from one property owner to do that at the time, and we suspect that they would be pretty willing to work with the city on getting that easement, as well as participate in the cost of those things. Typically, that would be worked out in a development agreement, or a pro rata share that the city could recoup the cost of that line as the development occurs, and the development ties into that sewer line. The line is deep enough to serve all those properties, and it does, it is deep enough to serve the properties across FM 550. And because we know that there's some interest in those properties tying in to that sewer line as well, and getting on the, on the city sewer. We have verified that there is capacity in the Sonoma Verde. documents, but we've got a site plan, a floor plan, and elevation artist renderings for you to look at. We're going to leave those here for you, and I'm here to answer any questions if you have them at this time.
So did we get the results of the soil study? Was, is everything?
It was what we hoped.
Okay, good.
Yeah, yeah, no bad surprises. Still bad, but not horrible. It was expectedly bad, yeah, but no worse than we thought it was going to be.
And when do you think we'll have the brown?
That's up to you guys, we're ready. I've got my gold shovels all polished up. I would suggest we do it sometime, maybe just before you do your Christmas tree lighting or something like that.
Somewhere next couple of weeks?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's over to us.
Okay, okay.
Who did the sign out?
We had that done.
That's great.
Well, thank you.
Any questions for? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to 7.3. Presentation, Discussion and Action Regarding the State Highway 205 Sanitary Sewer Line Award Bid to Double R Utility on a $328,647 for the base bid or $316,475.20 for the alternate bid. Ms. Lisa, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, Mayor, several months ago, the city council engaged Teignall and Perkins, an engineering firm, to design a sanitary sewer line along Highway 205 from Villa Toscana, which is the entrance to Sonoma Verde, to FM 550 in order to serve part of the area in the Clendin Chism Zone general business. Once the design was complete, council then authorized Teignall and Perkins to prepare an invitation to bid for construction of the project. Bids were opened on October 1, and the bid tabulation sheet is attached to your packet along with the letter submitted by Teignall and Perkins, kind of explaining the process for that and the results. At this time, I'd like to request Matt Atkins, if he'd approached the podium, and if he'd briefly described the base bid and the alternate bid options, and their recommendation for the firm for the project, and then he can answer any of your technical questions about the sewer line.
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. You elected this evening and getting sworn in. I am Matt Atkins with Teignall and Perkins. We are the firm that did the design and then subsequently handled the bidding along Ms. Paloma. As she mentioned, it was, the bids were opened on October 1, and Double R Construction is the apparent low bidder, and we vetted them out, and we've worked with them several times in the past. We do this kind of work for many municipalities, easy for me to say, across the metroplex, and they're one of the better contractors that we've worked with doing this type of work. The options that you see there, option, the base bid option is the option that runs along Highway 205. It would be just outside of the right away of Tech Dot, so there's no Tech Dot interference there, and it would be, serve the properties on the, in the front of, from the front. The alternative bid is one that runs along the west side of the properties, which is the way that the properties currently drain, which is the typical way you would, where you would put the sewer line. So just for ease of convenience, we did both of those options to see which one would be cheaper. Turns out the alternative option is the cheaper one. It would require just one easement from one property owner to do that at the time, and we suspect that they would be pretty willing to work with the city on getting that easement, as well as participate in the cost of those things typically. That would be worked out in a development agreement or a pro-rata share that the city could recoup the cost of that line as the development occurs, and the development ties into that sewer line. The line is deep enough to serve all those properties, and it does, it is deep enough to serve the properties across FM 550, and because we know that there's some interest in those properties tying in to that sewer line as well and getting on the city sewer. We have verified that there is capacity in the Sonoma Verde lift station where this all drains to, to handle this, the additional sewer from this area based on commercial buildout. With that, I'll answer any questions?
Sure. Across 550, are you saying where the Sonic is?
Yes, ma'am.
And so it would go along the side that the Chisholm Crossing base pool is on? The subdivision there?
Yes.
And would that subdivision, if those residents wanted to tie into the sewer, would they be able to?
I don't believe so.
Right, because we don't?
Yes, ma'am.
And you're saying there is the capacity in the Sonoma Verde lift station?
Yes, ma'am.
What is your opinion on constructing this before or before or during the 205 expansion? What would be the impact of doing it now versus away?
So if you get it in now, you're in ahead of Tech Dot, and if there's any impacts to that, then they would be responsible for adjusting that, but we've designed it in accordance with the expansion of the roadway. You've got a bore under 205, so essentially, there's, it's a trenchless technology that bores underneath 205, and there is a steel encasement pipe that is put under Highway 205, so that if there ever is any maintenance necessary on that line, you don't have to open cut the highway, and that we accounted for their expansion on that as well.
Okay, so the design plan does already account for the 205?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, in the other cities that you've worked with, has there ever been a case, I guess I'm asking for your professional opinion, does, will the 205 expansion be more, would the sewer be more alarming for the businesses coming in there with having the sewer there now versus waiting until after the 205 was expanded?
So for development to occur and for businesses to come in, you need three things. You need water, you need sewer, and you need storm drain. Currently on that corner, you have water readily available, and you have drainage through the back, but there's no sewer. So to get sewer there, this would achieve getting sewer, which would then make those properties developable as soon as the sewer is in place.
Well, it's going to start in a couple of years. No, I mean, our section, yeah, 2022.
The sewer line? So the bids are currently good until the end of this month. After that, they're no longer good. Double R, I believe, has said that they would hold their prices other than the pipe price, because prices are, materials are going up in cost. And I believe on the city's charter and ordinance that you can, if it doesn't exceed about $25,000, then you can continue with that. But the construction of the actual sewer line itself would only take a couple of months at the most, once they start actual construction. It's a, as far as utility construction and sewer line construction, it's a very simple project for a utility contractor. No, sir. All of the, all of the work would be outside of the, outside of the right away. And like I mentioned earlier, there would be a bore under Highway 205, so there would be no impacts, other than just trucks entering and exit and getting construction equipment there. The yellow is the, is the cheaper route, is the one that's a little bit cheaper, and that's the one that would require less easements. Either one is a feasible route. Yeah, no, sure, no problem. So when you have a sewer there to the property, as they would develop, they would tie, just tap into that sewer line. If it was the one in the back, the yellow one, the property naturally drains that way anyway, so they would, their sewer line would just run towards the west, and then there would be a physical tap into that sewer line. It's, can be made by plumber. So it, it will just depend, either one of them are acceptable for that property to develop in, so the one, the green one would give more access to tap in easily to the corner, because you can see that it's all the way up there. It would be easier to tie into that, yes. 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 Yeah, from an engineering standpoint, either, either route is possible, that's why we propose them, but you're thinking along the right tracks in that, from a, from a development standpoint, the green one is more accessible to all the property. Now, it would require, I believe Mr. Palani would need an easement, provide an easement, and then there's another property there as well, that I believe is currently owned by Brookshires, that would need, need to provide an easement. You could act on this whenever you choose to, and the construction would then begin after those easements are obtained. So Ms. Paloma could reach out to those owners and work on obtaining those easements.
We don't anticipate any difficulty getting the easements because those owners are going to want access to the sewer line.
Yeah, I would not anticipate having any issues getting easements from them.
No, for the, for the business district.
So the, the commercial properties on the corner are actually, you would have to? Yeah, so on the, on the corner of 550 and 205 there, Mr. Palani owns a piece of property, and then Brookshires, and then Mr. Whittle owns the remainder part of it. Yes, it is just contractors thinking that they could get a good deal. So the fact that we've got several, and I don't remember exactly off the top of my head how many we got, but eight or nine bids, we always see some outliers that will be crazy. And then what we like to see is that there's two or three that are within range, and they were real close to our estimate. They're bidding on the same thing, so, yes. It is, on publicly bid items, on publicly bid jobs, there is a line item, a quantity sheet and a proposal that they have to provide numbers on. So it says there are X number linear feet of sewer line, eight inch tunnel, X number manholes, and so they all bid on exactly the same thing. And then we tabulate that up and compare the prices for each one. Yes, they, they're, once they get on the job, they're on it and they get after it, and they get it done. Yes, ma'am. No, they're, so as part of our scope, we always do a reference check and, on the low bidders, apparent low bidders, and we check as to what their references are, who they've worked with in the past, if they have any negative experiences with any other municipalities. If we have personal knowledge of them, that goes a long ways, and I have personally worked with this contractor on no less than about 20 jobs, so. Absolutely. And that is a question I always ask of the other cities when I do call and don't know the contractors, if you're willing to, if you're willing to hire them again, and that is the telltale question.
Did this bidder, this Double R Utility bidder, do they, do they have a warranty on their work?
The bid documents require a maintenance bond, that is a two-year, 100, two-year maintenance bond, which is typical of all municipal work. And that is basically a bond that they're providing at the end of the job when, when the city accepts it, that says, okay, for the next two years, if anything goes wrong with this, we'll come back and fix it, or you can call our bonding company and that, they've got the money there to have that project fixed if they happen to go out of business or whatever.
I mean, outside of the bond, are they extending that, or are they just fixed right there at the bond?
That's a standard municipal contract.
Lisa, may I ask, Lisa?
A lot of cities from, previous discussions we've had about this issue, use their sales tax revenue to fund projects that exist versus your adware. What sort of money, I don't have the funding, if you did in sales tax?
That's a good question. I forgot to write it down on my way in here today, but we were in the mid threes, mid 300s.
And would you suggest if we did the funding that we would take that money and move it into the utilities fund?
I think ultimately, anything involving sewer or water should be within the utility fund. Since we're trying to build that utility fund, I think it's not unreasonable to use some money from the general fund. You know, if you wanted to do 50/50, we can talk to the accountant, and we can kind of look at the numbers and kind of just see what makes sense. But we can probably find a good place, a good compromise, and we may want to transfer maybe 50% of from general to utility. I think we can, I think we can. I think if you can authorize the funding, then the accountant and I can work on how to do that, and we can bring, but we would need to bring a budget amendment back to you anyway, and we could talk about how, how to organize that funding at that time.
In our budget report, the current sales tax revenue that we have right now, current year-to-date is $353,242.
Which is right about where we're looking at the.
Lisa, were you able to get ahold of any of the other corners or speak with anybody about?
Not at this time, I haven't. Just Mr. Palani.
But did you, were you able to contact them, or did you just run out of time?
I just, I haven't had the time to, to reach out and make contact.
I think we need to do that.
I've attempted, I just haven't made contact with them.
Yeah, just, I think we need to do that before we make any decisions.
Let me, let me try to explain one thing too, though. The idea is for the city ultimately not to be out any funds at all. This is sort of the city putting up the funds upfront, because that just makes it easier to do this. And then ultimately, what we would do is we would have some sort of a ordinance in place that one requires anybody along that line that's retail to tap into that line if they build. And the other part of that is a pro-rata part of that, that we would get the engineer to work on what cost makes sense, and whether that is per acreage or it's per linear foot, we kind of look at that and decide. But we would have a formula, and each property owner would be responsible for a certain portion of that. And ultimately, we would actually even put in the design, what we've already paid for the design on this, fold that in as well. So I can't promise you when it would get paid, because I don't know the timeline for everyone's development. But the idea is that we would pay for it upfront, and then eventually the city would be paid back in full.
Yeah, because each, each owner of that land could actually put that, that cost towards the price, right, of selling that land, so they would.
They could use that to market it, certainly.
Absolutely, okay. That's why I think it's important to do the green line, you know, the green route, just because we are doing this for businesses and that's the best route. So that's my opinion, is the top route going down 205. Because I think it would, it would benefit the people across from 205, it would benefit the people across from 550, and also if there were any issues, the yellow line, which is close to Chisholm Crossing, they wouldn't have to put up with any digging and inconvenience, is my opinion.
Fair point.
So.
And the price difference is not, it's not that drastic?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just over $12,000 difference. Please know I'm not promoting development, I'm working at the pleasure of the city and the city council here. We provided a service that we were asked to do and look at this, so however you choose, I think Ms. Paloma's giving you options that we agree with on what you would do at this point in time based on the information that we have.
So we've got till November 30th, is correct?
Yes.
And then what happens if we can't make a decision?
At that point, if Double R, the contractor is allowed to just.
Step aside.
Step aside, walk away, or you can approach them to see if they would be willing to hold their prices, or to see how much of a price increase it would be based on the pipe or any of the increases in cost. When they bid projects like this, you know, they, they know that, okay, it's going to be a certain timeline, and that pipe, that they're going to account for that, purchasing that pipe at a certain point in time and at a certain price.
Just one other consideration too, is we do have the existing business that's on the north corner there, that does want to participate.
Sonic?
Yes.
Yeah, I kind of figured they would be. So, so what's our next step?
We have to, Vika?
Well, I would like to suggest, and I don't know if it's in the form of a motion, but I would like for us to postpone this vote and have a special meeting before the end of November, so that we could have a public hearing specifically on this issue and a specific and then come to a vote at that time. Because I think it requires a little more thinking, and I would like to get a more coming vote if we could. But that's my opinion, and it would require us to have a meeting in the next week or so.
I agree.
Hold on, Cash.
Two, one phone call, one email. One wanted a Bridger store, and I can't recall the other.
Well, we have a motion in a second, so we should, we should, oh, I guess we'll let that in the discussion.
Well, and, and my, my thought process is to get Brian up to speed on, since it, I think this is a very important decision for our city, and to get Brian up to speed, it would, it would, it would be nice, yeah. Right, right. Have a, have a moment to really think about it, but, I mean, this is just a huge decision. But, I mean, this is just a huge decision. It's a huge decision. We'll serve a banana bread. Okay, we'll do it.
I mean, if we have a meeting and no one comes, then I guess they're okay with the decision.
Oh, here's the thing you're going to have to realize, you got one week.
Yeah.
You also have Thanksgiving.
Right, but that's our job.
You plan on having a public hearing and a special meeting?
No, a public hearing and a special meeting on the same day.
So, just for clarification, so this is not going to be a public hearing that we advertised in the paper, this is just going to be a public hearing we put on the agenda?
Whatever's the proper term.
Yeah, whatever.
For office citizen comments.
Just citizen comments on this particular.
Just a little notice, specific to that.
Kick it one more time. I know, but it's also.
So we're now just have the cost for it?
Yeah. And we're just now, I mean, like I said before, I thought we'd already made the decision on the green line, but here we are again with the yellow line. So it's like, okay, well, maybe we still have questions or maybe we're still, I'm not sure. So, one more time, one more kick down the road and then.
Kick it down the road for the next week and you don't have an answer, the cost goes up?
Yep, then that's it. Well, we'll make it, we'll make it next week then.
Do you want to set a date for that meeting?
Yes. Yes.
I just wanted to see if we could go ahead and set that date now, so look at our schedules, maybe.
What does everybody's schedule look like for next week?
Thursday night is occupied with a work session with EDC and P&amp;Z on the 19th, so Thursday's out.
You can't do any that key. Nathan, can you do one? Nathan, what are you on Wednesday? Wednesday good? Wednesday good? Wednesday good? Wednesday good? Let's do Wednesday.
What time?
It's got to be around the seven o'clock range because I have, I have a project that I have.
Let's just do 7:30. Let's just do 7:30.
7:30 and two items, one, a public hearing for input and then an action item?
Yes. So we're looking at the 18th at 7:30.
Is everybody in favor of having that meeting?
Yes.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
An opportunity for citizen comments, whatever the correct terminology is.
Just a special meeting.
Yes, especially for those public hearings.
If it helps, a public hearing, citizen comments is what we have every night, okay? Now, granted, it'll be a little bit different with this next meeting because that'll be the only item on the agenda. And so citizen, a public hearing is something that you publish in paper, notice to people, we're having a special meetings here, excuse me, a public hearing of the city council of McLean-Chisholm on this date at this time. In general, we'll be discussing this topic and that's posted in the paper. You're not going to be really in violation of reading typically during the rally seven days prior, but you're not required to have a public hearing on this, so you're not going to be really, but that's the general rule, seven days, so you're having a violation of anything. And at that point is, the public hearing can be an item on the agenda, but what that is, there's no, for a citizen comments, anybody who wants to just comes up and says, I'm John Jones, live here, this is what I have to say about the item. Sit down. That's the little difference between a public hearing and citizen comments.
And an opportunity for the gentleman to comment, do a few, so people can get answers to their question.
I just don't want to have to spend any more money on the paper and stuff, so.
Well, you can still accomplish that with a special meeting. You can have, you can have the same agenda either, there's nothing wrong with the way it is now. He comes up, he presents the, you could have the presentation first and if you want to, on the agenda, I guess that matters because you can move around a client, but you have citizen comments after that. And then you can have council discussion and possible action.
Matt, is someone from your firm available next Wednesday?
Yes, ma'am, we'll have somebody.
For technical questions?
Yes. I should be able to make it myself.
Is there anyone else you'd want me to have here? Is there anyone else you'd want me to have here, specific to the project?
Seven four, discussion of action regarding transfer of allocation.
Thank you.
Of coronavirus, oh, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Allocation of coronavirus relief fund is established by the CAREERS Act to Rockwell County.
Yes, Mayor, this item is related to COVID-19 and federal funding made available through the CAREERS Act for local governments under populations with 500,000 for reimbursement of costs related to expenditures incurred due to response or mitigation efforts of coronavirus. As with all federal funding, there are very strict limitations on the permissible use of funds. These were funds that were not given to us, but they were made available for us to apply for. Based on our population, it was a per capita number, $177,000 was what was available to us to apply for funds. These expenditures would have had to have been directly responsive to coronavirus efforts. They can't have been items that we've already budgeted for, they had to be during a specific time period. They had to be for things like medical supplies purchases, overtime for health and safety personnel. It could be regular time if we had redirected a personnel for COVID. As it turns out, we had such few expenses, we were just very, very fortunate in that sometimes it's good to be small and we just did not have the expenses that the other cities and the county did. So, rather than just letting that money go back to the federal government, we have one opportunity to keep it in our region and that is to let the county have the funds. And so what I have on the agenda for you tonight is to consider, it's actually 171,000, not 177, is to consider transferring this allocation of funds and letting the county have it. At that point, the county would be responsible for all documentation and anything responsible, you know, for getting that money if they used it. I did ask what kind of funds, what kind of expenditures they had had and to date, it's a million dollars in running. You know, they've got the jail and the courthouse and significant personnel and we are, are county residents as well, so just talking it over with them, I just thought it would be a better use than just letting it go back completely, at least it stays in our area this way.
Can we leverage any of that from the county? I mean, like, kind of, maybe sheriff, a little extra sheriff duties?
You know, we can hope that in the future, they might be a little gracious with us, but we can't use it as a bargaining chip or something.
So it's just, we're just being nice and giving them, yeah.
If we don't use it, it just folds back.
I know.
And we just give them allocation, we haven't received any actual funds though.
No, no, we didn't receive any funds. This is like a grant that you would have to apply for and we actually waited to the last moment because we were making sure that we weren't going to need it for something. But even as late as October 30th, I received confirmation from Texas Department of Emergency Management that the things that I had on my list that we could potentially apply for funds, that almost none of them were going to be qualified.
It's kind of like the dentist giving you a building for free, just, you know, just he or she feels like.
We had, we had a few supplies, you know, hand sanitizer and a few extra cleaning supplies, but we had already budgeted for that and we were actually able to accommodate within our regular budget. We didn't have overtime costs, chief was able to kind of rearrange things. Fortunately, we didn't have a lot of personnel hit with COVID. We didn't have a lot of quarantining, just a couple of small, short periods where we had to kind of be cautious. We had a letter go out, but I think that was only about $150. And just overall, it was not worth doing the federal paperwork for, for just a few hundred dollars. I just hate to see the funds leave the region if we can keep them in the area.
Absolutely. Merry Christmas.
And it does have to be, I had this on for last week, but we had to postpone the meeting, but this does have to be done by the 13th. I have to actually get all that paperwork squared away between the county and the state by the 13th. So my recommendation is to.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer of allocation.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we transfer our allocation of CAREERS Act funds to Rockwell County.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Show that in the panelists, moving on to seven five. Discussion of action regarding consideration in a local agreement between the city of McLean-Chisholm and Kaufman County, Texas authorizing city of McLean-Chisholm to regulate subdivision plats and related permits in the extraterritorial jurisdiction known as the ETJ of McLean-Chisholm. Ms. Lisa?
Council, what is proposed here is an interlocal agreement by and between Kaufman County and the city of McLean-Chisholm, providing for the regulation of subdivision plats in the ETJ portion of Kaufman County. So a very small portion to our south in our ETJ is actually within Kaufman County. So a little piece of it is actually in the city limits, a little part of Triple Creek. And there's a greater portion, the man property and a little bit of extra that is actually also in Kaufman County. The state requires that we decide who is going to regulate subdivision plats. It either has to be the county or the city. Given the choice of who's going to have authority, I would always rather have the authority on the city's side. So what this does is that agreement just sort of lays out who is going to be responsible for what parts. It pretty much gives us all authority for plating. If there's a county road involved, they do, Kaufman County doesn't want to retain anything involving a county road and since we don't want to maintain roads anyway, that makes sense. Same for culverts, if there's a culvert next to a county road, they would maintain that if that's in the ETJ. Otherwise, if it's a subdivision, if there's a ditch or a culvert, that part would, if it's within the subdivision itself that we were regulating the plat, we would be responsible for that, we'd have our engineer involved. But overall, this is like similar agreements we've had in the past with Rockwell County where it does give the city subdivision authority. People would have to apply here for the subdivision plat, they pay us whatever fee that we're charging at that particular time and it'd have to go through our P&amp;Z and council approval process. This has been reviewed by our city planner, Mr. Halli.
By taking on the authority, what liabilities would we have, would we be subjected to?
I don't know that there's any additional liability, it's control, it's just us having the control versus the county having the control. It could be that our standards are a little higher than Kaufman County's, maybe or maybe not. But I'd always rather us have the choice than the county have the choice.
Would it take any extra manpower or anything like that to have to maintain?
No, in any of our costs, the way we have our fee schedule organized is any of our consulting fees that would be involved with subdivision review, we pass those fees through. So if we did have a subdivision come through, they would pay an application fee, but on top of that, we also make them sign something that says they will pay for any consulting fees. So we actually make them put money down, a deposit, and then we kind of drop down on that deposit. If they use it all up, we make them deposit a little bit more. And depending on how large a subdivision is, if there's any leftover, we'll give it back to them. So we don't profit from it, you know, as far as the consultant part of it. But we do make sure that we cover our costs.
What are the cons if the county takes it over?
What, the what, I'm sorry? Possibly, I mean, I don't know that their standard are lower.
Right, but they could.
It's a potential.
When you have a choice, you always prefer to be able to regulate. The statute's very clear because it just changed it about a year or two years ago, it's laid out, 24201, there are four ways that you could do it in the agreement. My opinion, two of them really aren't worth it, the other two, the county do it or let us do it. We get to control plating, our subdivision regulations stake hold, so we've at least got some say about how subdivisions are going to be regulated in our ETJ. So it's all, and everybody here pretty much knows, we have very, 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 very limited authority in the ETJ. This is about one of the only ways we have any type of control in our ETJ is through the subdivision regulations which we have via plating. So it's always good.
With some of those development agreements, at least with one that's existing in that portion in our ETJ though, there is a potential that that could be annexed into our city limits and we would want to make sure that it met our standards.
Did we initiate the agreement or was it Kaufman County?
Kaufman County sent it to me. And we actually made a couple of minor tweaks to it, but.
This has been in the works for.
A while, a couple of months. Well, you know what, actually Mike Hooker started talking to them and then the county gave us an agreement, so I'm not really sure.
Well, he actually came up here and they came up and did a presentation, it was on the agenda a few months back and they came up and spoke and they were kind enough to offer to take over the plating department because they were so generous to us, which I didn't like at all personally, because I would rather us be in control of plating in our ETJ so we have some say over what we want in the ETJ versus developers doing what he wants to do and cut deal with Kaufman County or whoever and putting up whatever
So has Kaufman County permission to agree with the agreement?
Yes.
I believe, yeah, I think they signed.
They're just waiting for us.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept an interlocal agreement with Kaufman County under option one, granting the city plating authority within the city's ETJ.
All right, I've got a motion, I'll second. I've got a motion, I'll second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, it is 8:38, we're taking a five-minute break.
She just seemed really relaxed.
Contractors with a capital C? If that doesn't work, I'll go back and I'll actually look it up. I've got it in my office somewhere.
Do you remember the guest wifi? Do you remember the guest wifi password? I don't know if that worked. Well, I've got it in my office. I'm just going to take a stab at it first. Between passwords here and passwords at home. It all been butted. I know right where it is.
Oh, thank you. I bought some of this water for you guys.
Thank you for being here. I shouldn't have. Thank you for making a difference. I ate my pork. I added myself.
Oh yeah, I'll sign this stuff right now.
I told the kids, we gotta kick this stuff out of the house.
Hold on, I'll get him just now.
I did that for three months and it was a good thing. Chicken salad for lunch. That wasn't too, too bad. The girls had a lot of ice cream in the house lately and that's one of my weaknesses.
There you go. All right, guys.
Hey, Chief. Hey, Chief. I need to talk to you. What, are you going to stay around or are you leaving?
Long.
Okay. I'm getting ready to send something to you.
Oh, I know.
Please, I'd like to do it this week. Okay, thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'm good.
Bye, Gimpie.
I'm ready to go running now.
I know that's a lot.
Oh, really?
You look like coal.
I was.
Take forty-seven. Let's go back in session. Moving to seven point six. Discussion and action regarding consideration of an interlocal cooperation agreement between Rockwall County and the City of McLendon-Chisholm for right-of-way maintenance. Ms. Lisa?
Yes, Mayor, this is another interlocal agreement, this time between McLendon-Chisholm and Rockwall County, not for plating, but for right-of-way maintenance. So as you know, the city does not have a public works department. We don't own any equipment for mowing or street maintenance. Anytime that we need any, any, you know, pothole patching or if we need to cut trees back on a road, we have to contract out for those services. Generally, we usually get two or three quotes at least, but generally, the county has provided a cost much lower than anywhere that we've found around. So they require that we, we do an interlocal with them. We've had one in the past. This is just kind of updating it. This does not require them to provide maintenance for us at any rate, and it does not obligate us to use them at all. This just, just agrees that we can ask for it. We do it on a case-by-case basis, you know, whether it's potable repair or it's cutting back the brush or most recently, I, I asked them to mow on Smith Road. If they have the time, they will, and we have to also agree to the quote. So if I want it done, I'll request what the work is. They'll come out, they'll look at it, they provide us a quote. We'd have to agree to it. We'd actually have to deposit that check with the treasurer in Rockwall County before the work is done, and then they schedule it when they can get to it. So no obligation on either side, just opportunity and agreement that we can use one another for that purpose.
Are they pretty, pretty cooperative and pretty quick on doing stuff like that?
Mostly. You know, when they, when it's mowing season, sometimes it takes a while for them to get to us. You know, as far as patching potholes and things like that, and you know, they've got priorities too, so they get to us when they can. But for the most part, as far as pricing, they were ten times less expensive, I think, when we were looking at Clutz Road on repairs.
But any time delay would be anything substantial there? It would be detrimental to start looking.
No, and if it was, we could always look elsewhere.
Uh, I'll entertain a motion on that one. All right, I've got a motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Lisa, did you ever reach out to them and get a price on the Dow Road issue?
Um, we are going to have a discussion with the county. Lots of the cities are actually having the same issue that we are. So we found out that we are not alone in that issue about the boundary and not knowing exactly is the boundary on this side of the street or the middle of the street or the other side of the street. So we are, we're going to tackle that probably after the first of the year.
And, and.
That question about a specific training issue about whether or not we do a left, right or left training?
I, I'll try to. The reason, the way I'm tying this in is, is that would this agreement in any way, shape or form nullify our ability to get external quotes for taking care of that if it becomes our liability?
No, not at all.
Thank you, Lisa.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, seven seven. Discussion and action regarding adoption of an ordinance increasing the rate of deposits for the Texas Municipal Retirement System known as GMRS and the employees of McLendon-Chisholm, providing for a change in the municipal contribution to the current service annuity reserve upon retirement of employees. Ms. Lisa?
Yes, Mayor, we talked about this during budget season. The Texas Municipal Retirement System is a system that probably the majority of Texas cities use for their employee retirement program. When, when employees kind of look for an employer, it's kind of part of the package. So they not only look for salaries, they, they look for, are you a member of Texas Municipal Retirement System or some other system? They look at the contribution rates and the ratio match. So right now, we are at a deposit rate, employee deposit rate of five percent and a one-to-one match by the city. What we budgeted for, we talked about over the summer, was raising that to a seven percent employee contribution and then a two-to-one match. So that gets matched when an employee retires. And I didn't bring it with me, but we did a little chart over the summer that, that shows that the impact of that over a twenty-year career is more than doubling what an employee would get for a pension or an annuity retirement. So this is just putting this into effect. So this would go into effect in January. We're just adopting it now so we have time to get payroll adjusted. So it wouldn't go into effect until, until January.
Yes, sir. All right, I'll entertain a motion. All right, I've got a motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right. Showing unanimous. Moving on to seven point eight. Discussion and action for approval of utilizing fire capital replacement funds for purchasing replacement self-contained breathing apparatus, bottles expiring this year. Chief is not here, so I'll turn it over to Lisa.
Okay. This was Chief's request, I think, at one of the last meetings that we talked about. He's asking for ten thousand, three hundred fifty-five dollars and twenty cents, which is a quote that's in your packet, for self-contained breathing apparatus. So these expire after a period of time, whether they're used or not used every so often. So he's got some that are coming up, about ten, that need to be replaced. So instead of using from his existing budget, because he, he considers this capital, he'd like to use funds from the capital, fire capital budget, and we can't use those funds without you signing off on them. So last year, we did a, established a fund balance and there's three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in that fund at the moment. And it was meant to do long-term capital items, so items that will be with us for several years.
What are we looking at cost-wise for these bottles that are expiring?
For these? Ten thousand, oh, I'm sorry. It's a total, it's ten thousand, four hundred sixty-five. So that's with delivery and the bottles themselves.
Okay. So he's, he's basically requesting to use ten, basically ten thousand out of that first.
About ten-five, if you want to round.
All right, I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion on this as far as.
And, and let me just.
Approval of utilizing.
Yeah, let me, let me just explain too. He's got to do it either way.
Yes.
So if he, if he doesn't use this fund, then he's going to have to adjust his budget, his fire budget, and try to figure out a way to cut something else. So I, at this point, I think his fire budget is pretty lean. And so we're just kind of hoping that he doesn't have to cut it anymore because we just can't find any place else to cut it right now. So that's why we're asking to use these funds.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
That are currently in use?
You said we have some, whether they're used or not, they can expire. How many do we have?
He's got ten that are coming up that will be expiring.
How many are there?
I don't know that.
Twenty.
So I have a different question. Is there a service that you can lease these? Or is it private?
Not that I'm aware.
Yeah. Is there any way to sell it to us in an office? At least the tanks in the, they are private?
We have a way to fill them. We have a way to fill them ourselves.
They're a gas station, but it's just.
Sort of tanks themselves.
The tanks themselves. Every ten years.
Kind of like, and I noticed this not too long ago, you can buy those little small five gallon metal tanks at Walmart that you can fill full of air to use them to air tire up. They actually have a stamped expiration date on it, that after so long, that little tank ain't good no more.
Yes.
Their bunker gear does the same thing. It expires after so many years.
Right.
It's like ten now and then ten another.
All right, got a motion and discuss, uh, second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, aye.
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 All right, that's seven eight. Seven nine. Discussion and action regarding McLendon-Chisholm five K fun run event. Ms. Trudy.
Okay, this was, um, this is going to be December twelfth. At eight AM to approximately eleven AM. It's a five K run and family fun run. There will be banners posted, information to sign up or come out and support on Facebook, city websites, et cetera. The route will be from City Hall down five fifty to Chisholm Crossing neighborhood at Granite Ridge. Take a left, down fireside drive, down to Dancing Waters. Turn around, come back and do the same path. It is, it was brought to Chief and Chief brought it to me. So they're wanting to have it December twelfth. And that's all I know so far.
I have one question before we wrap this motion on. It leaves out of here and it goes basically into the neighborhood right there.
Yep.
Has there been talk about using the sheriff's office for traffic control during enforcement when we're running in this city section?
CERT will be out. We've already got CERT involved. And then there'll be an ambulance stationed in the neighborhood. I've already spoke with the neighborhood. I've already got their okay. I think, I mean, everything is really ready to go.
Now, are they going to do official timing and stuff like that?
That I don't know. That is not, that is not something I.
It used to be part of the Rockwall running club and I know that a lot of those folks throughout the Rockwall County, there were a lot of races, but they go to ones every time. They, you know, they take it pretty serious.
Yeah. That's something I don't know.
I just want to make sure we don't have an issue with it where the county goes later on. You know, you run on a farm market where you don't have the proper protection.
CERT's out. Sarah Naylor, which I believe is at Keller Williams.
I know her name. I don't know the person.
She's done a lot in our community. She came to Chief and Chief came to me and.
Are they just?
They, they actually are. I don't know what the amount would be because I don't know what, you know, if there's an entry fee or what that might be, but they actually are proposing that funds would be donated to the CERT team. Yeah.
So was there a cost to the city?
No cost to the city.
This is new standard.
Other than time, just, just time.
I'm sure it's a sort of, you use that service.
It's a citizens' response team, so.
Community emergency response team. They're trying.
Community emergency response team, they're trying, um, they're trained volunteers, they augment police, fire, um, search and rescue teams for any type of catastrophic events, whether it's, uh, a missing person, uh, tornadoes, disasters, anything like that.
At the, at the house that caught on fire in Kingsbridge, they were there.
Kind of like, uh, they're like a Red Cross, only they have, they have more skills. I don't wanna say better, they have more skills.
They provide support. They could go get an extra vehicle, uh, they could carry personnel back and forth, they might go get water or supplies, or, uh, bring some sort of relief to the firemen if they're gonna be on scene for a while, yeah.
Law enforcement would use that a lot of times, and we have, uh, neighborhood searches for missing kids, or somebody with mental issues that's wandering off, and they'll use a CERT team to help coordinate the area and, uh, get it done faster.
So they'll use, uh, city, our, our parking and everything as a staging area?
This will be the beginning of it, so this will be where they'll have, you know, the staging and the tables and sign up and everything like that, I'm assuming.
Are they gonna need to have access to the chambers?
Uh, we, we might need at least the restroom area, um, and I would assume we might need, I don't know what the weather's gonna be like in December, but you wanna sign up inside versus outside, I don't know. It's possible that we would need to use some part of the chambers.
And I believe they're, they're gonna do it to where you can sign up beforehand also, so she's gonna, she's getting together the logos and everything like that, putting together banners, um...
Most races are signed up, too, but then...
Yeah, but you'll have a few.
A lot of them will have a few, a few last minute, they'll let it out.
It's funny, they're doing a run, because most runs right now are, are, you just go run on your own, it's like a virtual run.
Right, well, this is, um, it's also gonna have, be like a family fun, so there's gonna be one to where, I believe it's where you can take your kids and stuff like that, it's only a certain route, you don't have to do the whole route for the kids.
Some of them will do, yeah.
So it's gonna be, it's like a, it just, yeah, it's like a, it is, it's like a fun run, yeah.
Or the wagon, or the toddler, just...
Yep, yep, toddling around, yeah, trying to wear it out.
Is there an entry fee? Is there an entry fee? So somebody's gonna actually pay money to run outside in the middle of December? People do it all the time?
Nope.
Yeah, I'd, I think the, like, fun run, that's an oxymoron, but that's just...
Yeah, the fun and the run doesn't quite go together, yeah.
Do you think the construction's gonna even go through all this?
No, but, uh, we'll comply with the law, and we'll make sure that there won't be, uh, any conflicts.
All right, guys.
Hopefully it'll be done by then, text on.
Well, well, it'll take us down the road too long.
So, yeah, so Chief would have a little more information for us, but from what I understand, my last meeting was, that's what I was asked to get, was permission to go down our, um, the residence, down Dancing Waters and all that good stuff, and come back around. So everybody there is good with it. Um, I just gotta get a couple of places to put the ambulance, and then see if I can borrow somebody's driveway, so that ambulance can be backed into it in case there's an emergency, and then, um...
Just the use of public property?
Just the, yeah, just the use of that, so other than that, that's it.
So it's not costing the city anything?
Nope, nope.
I don't know that we need to have a motion, or, or anything, or...
Just something that was brought to me that I was supposed to...
Lisa, do you agree?
Um, I don't know that I require a motion, I, I, we just didn't wanna do it without bringing it in front of you.
You're always better putting on your possible action and not needing it than needing action.
Just move forward with it if it becomes a situation where they require additional services, or costs, we need to be aware of it.
Yep, absolutely.
Good to go. All right, move on, seven, ten. Uh, discussion and action regarding the Christmas tree lighting.
Okay, um, um, these are questions that I think I've already received answers for, but, um, would like to get them out on record. Um, since Chief is not here, he can't answer some of them, but, like, for the, um, I was just gonna say, should we put up a tree? We have, like, three options, I think we've all kind of decided...
What did we do, let me ask you this, to the whole trial, or...
Yeah, please.
Was it, last year, we did the lighting of the one out in front?
Mm-hmm.
The, the live tree, but we also set the one up in here?
Yes.
We did the reading of the Christmas story, and we had fun stuff, right?
Yep.
I'm gonna treat it just like I did Halloween this year. I don't want to start canceling traditional type things that people look for.
Okay.
But if we can keep with that same theme, I would prefer that.
Well, I think...
You all are gonna have to like that.
I think I have a plan, and I think my plan is that we possibly, which I, we've still gotta think about this, but do the, uh, groundbreaking on the fire station that same day.
December first.
December first, it's always gonna be December first, whether it's a Saturday, a Thursday, a Monday, and it will be on a Tuesday this time.
That's pretty awesome.
So with, um, I thought maybe we could possibly do the groundbreaking on that before, and then have, um, Santa, and just like we did last year, um, have Santa read this, the book, read the book outside, and then have all of our cookies and food and stuff set up outside, do the hot cocoa and stuff in here like we did, but we'll just have to bring it outside. And then, um, the only thing that will be inside is Santa. So that way, those people that want to have pictures with Santa, that is their choice, you know? But everything else will be outside to where...
I don't know if she looks into that a lot.
Well, uh, yeah, I mean...
Maybe you might have to bring a little bit in.
Well, that's what, I mean, I'll play, uh...
Right.
We know it worked last year. We know it...
Because here's the thing, we've run it off, people, gentlemen, show up because they're concerned about wearing masks for a virus or anything like that.
They don't have to show up.
But we'll respect that, but I'm not gonna stop everybody.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, is I've got a plan, I know that it worked last year, all indoors, we're good with that.
Sure.
But to accommodate, I feel that maybe if it is nice, if it's not ugly outside, then we'll do it outside as far as the food and stuff goes. As far as food goes, I will just do store-bought cookies, I will not ask for homemade cookies, I'm guessing. So, and then, um, Chief had brought up maybe doing a movie theater if it's nice, a movie projector, screen, and a bonfire with, um, smores. So, again, that's, I know what I did last year worked well, if he wants to add that, I told him.
As long as it's off here.
It's all you, buddy.
Car banana bread is an option.
Oh, there you go, perfect, perfect, I know somebody. Um, so anyway, so we can do that, I mean, that's my thought for the COVID situation, but if it's cold and yucky, then we'll just bring it inside, and if you wanna come out, come on out, if you don't, then that's your choice also, so, but I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and go through with my Santa, my Santa, I feel very good about my Santa, because we get him first. He doesn't normally start until December first.
In the rubber?
Yep, and he starts, he starts December first, and we are his first people, so he will not be susceptible to...
He's one of the few that I know that actually makes him feel like, he'd be really sad.
Yeah, so, but I just feel good, because we are doing it December first, and because, you know, he won't have been sitting with a bunch of kids, and, so I think ours will be the... Are you kidding? Yeah.
He what?
Oh, he's, he's, yeah, yeah, I've got him down December first.
When you see this guy?
Until he decides not to.
Oh, okay.
No, he knows. So anyway, so that's, so...
He's a neat person.
So I got that, um...
If I might, if I might just add one thing while I'm thinking about it, uh...
Yes.
The toy drive is gonna get kicked off on the twentieth of November, so it might be a good opportunity to kind of advertise, you know, for people to bring a, a gift. Um, we haven't really talked about a food drive, but we still have, you know, the ability to do that as well.
Okay, so, um, let's, I will email you on all that and get that going also, um...
So, I don't know, I don't have a comment, but, you know, it's not a, you know, it's all right.
Well, okay, I've already got all my signs done, that's, that's, so it is what it is, but as far, uh, I think it's at five-thirty, do you remember, Lisa? I wanna say it's five-thirty, 'cause I think it gets dark at five forty-five.
Pretty much, pretty much, you figure after five o'clock it's gonna be dark.
Yeah, so, I think the signs, um, say five-thirty, um...
She's getting checked.
Yeah, and, it's 'cause I think, like, at five forty-five, it starts getting dark, that's when Rodney will come on the fire truck from my house, he rides the fire truck in. It's so cool, the kid, we had a great time last year. Um, and I've got a new tree, so, I mean, and I've got everything else up in my attic, I just need somebody to help me get it all down. Um, five-thirty?
Five-thirty, seven thirty.
Yeah, and it, I think it, it lasted till seven-thirty, if not, maybe eight last year, but, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, quite.
So, um, and then we'll have Santa, we'll have letters for Santa, we will have, um, oh my gosh, what else did I have?
Well, you're probably not gonna be able to do the craft.
Oh, I forgot the craft. Yeah, so we probably won't do the craft. If we, especially if, if, if Chief does the bomba, or the bonfire stuff, I don't think we're gonna need a craft, to be honest with you. Uh, your girls, may I use them again? So I will get in contact, I'm sorry?
I will.
Thank you. Um, I will...
Yeah.
My kids still have the ornaments and that.
Do they? So, yeah, so, I mean, if, I think we've all kind of decided we wanna go ahead and just carry on as normal, but that's what we've got planned again, so unless, um, anybody can't do their duties hot cocoa-wise or anything like that, then...
Move forward as you've been doing.
Move forward, yes, usually.
I don't think we need that motion, it's just direction to move forward as you wish.
All right, and then I will start getting out all this information, out on, I'll get with you and get all that, uh, information, and hope you have me, have you help me get all that going. And then, um, as far as setting up and stuff like that, I mean, I can just slowly do all this, I'm gonna, I got the tree in my car now, I just need one of you men to help me get it out, and then I'll just start coming, yeah, I'll just start coming in and start decorating, if that's okay with you. Um, I do need to take all this over again like I did last time, so I do need to get our schedules down so that we're not all sitting behind a bunch of fluff, or whatever, so, as far as meetings go, so I'll do that last.
All right, guys, move on to seven, eleven. Uh, discussion and action regarding setting a date, time, and identifying agenda topics for special counsel on the, Ms. Trudy?
I'm sorry, say that again, I don't know.
The discussion and action regarding setting a date, time, and identifying agenda topics for special counsel, is that something we...
I think that's not what we're, we're not gonna do that, 'cause we only got two...
Okay.
Things, so...
So we postpone that, or, say, after the first of the year, for the discussion and action?
Scratch it till the first of the year.
All right, uh, seven, twelve, discussion and action regarding resolution, rescheduling or canceling, rescheduling or canceling regular council meetings during the twenty-twenty holiday season. Um, we usually cancel the last meeting in November and the last meeting in December because they fall either the day of, the day before, the day after Christmas, or Thanksgiving. Uh, are you guys still good with doing that? If you are, I'll entertain a motion right now.
Mayor, we can make a motion to, uh, cancel the November twenty-four and the December twenty-second council meeting.
All right, I've got a motion, I'll second.
Us.
Okay, I've got a motion, I'll second, is there any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, cut. Done with that one. Seven, thirteen, discussion consideration of resolution, establishing dates and times for regular city council meetings. Uh, here's the thing, guys, what, what has happened with my shift from now until July? Because I work nights as a national supervisor, it's my Tuesdays off, are opposite of council meetings. What we need to find out is can we move the council meetings either to the next Tuesdays or move them to a Wednesday, 'cause the week that we have normally scheduled council meetings, which are the second and fourth, is that correct? Um, I'm off on those Wednesdays and not off on those Tuesdays. But if we either had it the first and third, if we had it the first and third, I'm off every first and third Tuesday. Because the, the problem is being the national supervisor, I cannot be, uh, the team coming up.
If we're, if we're, if we're, if we're, if we're...
And that's gonna be, that's gonna be a, uh, a discussion, but, five of them. I'm good for Wednesday.
The only problem with the third Wednesday is that, so is it the first and third Wednesday or the second and fourth Wednesday?
Be the second, fourth Wednesday, same, same weeks, just shifting the day.
And if we have the road consortium, the, all those other meetings are on the third Wednesday.
Yeah, no, it wouldn't be, it'd be the second and fourth.
What about, um, Mr. Paul, what's your opinion?
Thank you for asking, and Lisa was nice enough to, to run about that, too. If we, as long as we stay on that second and fourth weeks, and, and actually, if y'all, if, I'm not telling y'all what to do, but if you go on Wednesdays, y'all be the only council meeting I have on Wednesdays each month, so whatever works for y'all, if you can choose Wednesday.
Then I'll entertain a motion on that.
Oh, wait.
When does it start?
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, sorry, one thing, if, if y'all do wanna do it, I would advise go ahead and do in the, uh, motion, but then we will need to draft an ordinance, 'cause we said, I mean, by ordinance...
We made a resolution in the packet, we just left the dates open, so we can...
Oh, was it a resol, oh, I didn't even see it, my fault, okay, so it's already in there.
When does it start?
When do you wanna start again?
Is there a message anywhere?
Y'all are, I can't, I'm actually, I don't...
We have, we have...
We could actually start it in December.
It'd be December second. So if you wanted to, somebody could, I wanna make a motion to change...
So instead of December eighth...
December eighth.
It would be December ninth.
So, yeah, you could, I, I wanna make the motion to, to change the council meeting days to second and fourth Wednesday, beginning December the ninth.
Yes.
At six-thirty, still same time?
Yeah, time frame's fine.
Is, is that just gonna be until, until further notice, or just, just kind of...
Yeah, it would be, it's changed, period, now you can always change it back if you want to, but once it's changed, begin, if, if somebody says December the ninth, then yeah, it changes and starts December ninth.
So everybody's work schedule's in comedy time?
All right, I'll, 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 Updates, discussion, direction of staff, um, the only updates I would have is we're getting into the holiday season. Thanksgiving is basically two weeks away. And Christmas is right behind the corner, and so is New Year's. Just remember with this modified schedules for the kiddos in schools and all that, some huns are out during the day. Times you thought they were supposed to be in school and some times they're not. And the holidays makes it even more, be very, very weary as children and people out on the road is. They're out and about. Doesn't matter, I don't have anything else. Uh, anybody else have any updates or discussion for staff at this point? All right, we'll move on to building reports. Building official report for September, any questions? Permit reports, any questions? All right, we'll move on to the CWD report, um, for September. Lisa, have we had any, any more inquiries or any complaints lately on CWD?
Nothing substantial. What we've run into is a lot of times we'll get complaints and they have cameras on those trucks.
Right.
And a lot of times people will say they didn't pick up my trash. Well, actually their trash wasn't out at the appropriate time.
Right.
Or they didn't empty my can. Well, that's because your can was full of lumber or something that was not appropriate. So we've not had, we've had very few true legitimate, uh, complaints.
I'm actually proud of them. Time or two, they, they were actually, they're Johnny and Spock had it all empty, took it in hand with it. Animal control report. How are we settling on that right now?
Um, they are out here every Friday and they are making calls, so they will patrol the area. Uh, they will also make calls out here as, as needed, so if somebody calls them. I, I can't recall the number of the animal.
Do we have it on, do we have it on our city website on the front page about that?
Yes.
I still occasionally see people posting pictures of dogs and some of the roads that are out on there.
Yes, and you can call, um, they can call for picking up strays.
Okay, because I know some people, when they see the pictures going, you can call for animal control. I do see people responding with that.
Yes, and they'll make every effort to return the animal to its owner. So, uh, if the animal is shipped, uh, they'll scan it, they'll try to contact the owner. Uh, if not, they will hold it and, and hopefully someone will claim it. Uh, they put it on their Facebook page and we, we have a link, I think, on our, our webpage too, you know, what that Facebook page is, so people can look for their animals, uh, if they are missing. They're also working, uh, code violation cases that involve animals as well, trying to help us with that. On those cases where we have too many animals, yes.
All right, any further questions on the animal control report? If not, uh, Chief's not here on the fire rescue report, but are there any questions on calls or call types? Budget report, any questions on that? All right. I'll go one by one on this last one. City council member reports and announcements. Nathan, you have anything?
No, pretty much gave you everything that I've got earlier, um. It's a busy time of the year for me.
No, I don't have anything specific. I just, but I would like to just reach out and just thank all the veterans on this Veterans Day for their, for the service to the country. As well as if, uh, no, actually, just, just thank veterans. I don't have anything else.
All right, before I, before I reach over to Lorna, um, guys, if you weren't here this morning for our veterans ceremony, she did an awesome job and it was an awesome turnout. More people than I expected, given the fact a lot of people were scheduled to go out and be around ladies in public during the big strike.
I think we were one of the few ceremonies in the county.
And we even had, didn't we carry some other cities, come by.
Good job, Lorna. Good job.
All right, and since you are now part of the family. Mr. Bryan, do you have anything for us tonight? Okay. Welcome aboard. We're proud to have you. So you will, you will get to learn the intricate details of our city. Yes, sir. All right. At this point in time, we have covered everything that was on the agenda. It is nine twenty-four.
Yes, please, I need, I need some muscles.